Good morning, everybody. Might be the only applause today, huh? Alright, well, hey, here we are having our town hall here in Chico. A nice bright morning here, and importantly, it's very cool right now, so I'm expecting about 104, 105 degrees this afternoon. It's nice to be out and about, so thank you for joining us, thank you for joining us. It's been a happy year so far, very incredibly busy here with the... But you know what, if we want to have a productive discussion, it needs to be silver, right? And so whoever has the microphone, whether it's me, or it's going to be somebody making the comments or making the questions, why don't we conduct ourselves in a way where one person at a time needs to speak, unlike... And that'll work a heck of a lot better, so anyway, here we go. So I'm pleased to be able to represent here the first district of Northern California, and it has been a heck of a start to the, not quite now, New Year, but so we're about seven months in, eight months into the new administration. I think we have a lot to be grateful for. Hey Dan, it's your time, okay, it's your time. Ninety minutes is what we get, so if you guys want to waste it, try and enjoy it. That's it, we have a lot to be grateful for as Americans, and I think the direction we're seeing, our economy going, the... Our border being secure with what we have. What in the world's a big shopping day activity coming up? Okay, about one citizen's time, then we can use your comments and questions here, so you know, work out an argument. You can't defeat yourselves, I don't know. Makes a lot of difference apart from brightly, everything across the country. The folks that we see is finding our community, so what that means for the violence against our people.
You love the violence!
We're really violent, right, we're really violent. One way we have, and we have thrown on force when we follow the law, you know, it's gonna rain a lot. Well, you know, the laws of course, we didn't eat comprehensive care, we didn't pay the cost of life insurance, and straighten the barriers for our borders, and allow people to want to come up with a border country that embraces legal increase. Anyway, and so, we'll see the results there, thank you for your contributions, you guys are props more in line. We have much to share on the process of energy, safety, of course, we can see, we'll take your comment. And so, I've, uh, and my position is here to let you know, I've worked on three committees in Congress. One is the agricultural committee, one is the natural resources committee, and one is the transportation industry committee. And I've been named chairman of the subcommittee on forestry, which is very important, like every obviously, on the campfire last year, fire after fire after fire, so under the thread rate on forest policies, our community, the state, our forests here, we don't lose so much of our landscape, they're unnecessarily threatened this fire. So with that also, I was named the chairman of the Western caucus, which is a, because that's his issue. So the Western caucus indeed stands up for energy, for forestry, for mining, all of the things to make a strong economy, but we should produce it here, we should build it here, we should make it here, we should mine it here. And a strong economy, do a strong job, do a good paying job, that happened right in this country, not trying there somewhere else. So importantly, so our constituents right here, we can't have that, we can't knock that out. Direct that everywhere else, okay, direct that everywhere else. So importantly, what we saw after the campfire in paradise, in paradise, the perfect devastation was the tens of thousands of homes and bridges lost, and the loss of life, but also the reimbursement there is coming from insurance companies, but also the PG&E settlement. For some reason, PG&E, that settlement, IRS deemed that to be a taxable event, so they worked very hard for foresting, for, I shouldn't say. Those taxes that we didn't pay to them are being sent out now, so we got the results on that. So I'm really, really pleased here with all the people, because the paradise region there is just a part of that IRS tax. We have efforts to make that before it's permanent, because it affects areas of urban, and other, other taxes. Just be, be taxes on that, so in general, on forestry, we're doing much to get more of our federal income out, and more effective. But we don't have these original flights, we have two million of them. So our forests have three piece legislation. Now, if the most recent compromise that's been made, you know, the, of course, will probably increase the patient's sales, I'm working on this plan, okay? So good work being done, forestry, we can speed up the patient's sale, we're getting, good work done over on the Mendocino recently, getting them actually doing it.
Question!
Topic that's been very, very popular on people, next to the Medicaid slash Medicaid now here in California.
What's left of it!
Yeah, so the work done in the big bill was to draw... He was a poor, guess what? I'd like for you to, I'd like for you to hear from Chuck Truman again, it doesn't pay a single dollar for people who qualify.
Newsom doesn't support a death tear!
There's fifty billion dollars to set up our local hospitals, you know, we, uh, we don't want to be, we don't want anybody harmed by the damage. Indeed, we want the folks to study on those folks that actually do qualify, and that will be a bigger win for our country. We want to get after the, the, although, the waste and the fraud we find in the, so... Many people, particularly in rural, that are not, not actually eligible for it, so that hurts the people that are eligible. When it comes back to again, in California, it's like the real goals in the bucket, like you can't remember the price of fifty dollars, even though it is, it will not be, it will not be, it will not be, it will not be, but it does help, it does help. We're talking about SNAP real quick, over to the question, the comments. So SNAP, we speak on the group SNAP program, SNAP is a very important program for many people in North Texas, and so... You may not know, spending on the SNAP program has gone up from 2019, from sixty billion to one hundred and sixty billion. So what we were looking at, is like, alright, how do we make the program go farther towards the people that need it, the people that would have to utilize it, and so that means no SNAP dollars, or whatever. After the folks that are able-bodied, that are required to have...
How's your tax going?
And what if we're not able-bodied in the circumstance of able-bodied, able-bodied adults, they're not prepared, okay, this is the thing. This is how you get self-doubt, by yelling, yeah, you get self-doubt, you're very, you're very... That's how you get self-doubt, so. Required for the able-bodied person to have their parents, after four weeks, twenty hours, and then you call the authorities, or you need, or you need help. Otherwise, you don't get to be on for it, but they have been ninety days, then the whole state is going to, most people aren't.
You don't work!
And so that supports the taxpayers in that sense, as well as important reforming, we'll tell you what happened during the SNAP. Indeed, nobody would need this, they're eligible, they're in the line, so that's it. That's it, sorry, nothing to talk to you about, so let's go again, so, um, so the first bill, the question over there.
Okay, so the way this is going to work well, and the way we're going to get through all of these people, is that you can use your red signs, and not waste all their time yelling. So if it's an answer you don't like, it's an answer you don't like, that's okay, or a question you don't like, that's okay too, but if you get ordered to get through it, it'll be two minutes over there, so you have two comments, you have the question and the answer, back to two comments, so you have, you can go to both lines, but I kind of, I will get through both, okay? So go ahead and do your...
My name is Kimberly Candela, I am one of your constituents. So too are over ten thousand people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, all who live in your district. They rely upon Medicaid, AKA Medicaid help dollars, not just for healthcare, but for a myriad of supports and services, my brothers win. That so-called big beautiful bill that you voted for, is going to take money from folks like them, who need it the most, and give it to who? To some of the people who need it the least, the most wealthy, like you. Even your party are actively hurting people with disabilities, people of color, queer folks, immigrants, veterans, people who are hungry, people without shelter, children experiencing poverty, that's just a partial list. You will deny all of this, we know the truth. We see, we know what is done, we vote, and we will hold you accountable.
Well, that's getting a lot right straight from, uh...
No, we're not, no, no, it's okay, so, sorry, I didn't tell you what I, that's comments, I...
Thanks for the comments.
Hello, Jim Fettencourt, I'm from Glen County, and I agree with everything that was just shared. Also, given our concern for America's democracy, it seems that we're becoming more of an autocratic dictatorship type of government, where we are, to turn away from our allies that worked with us, supported us, and fought with us during World War I, II, and... I've been, I've been a bachelor of the country, and we said, get done, fought for. It seems now that we are aligning with dictators and communists, Putin, Ken Fionn U, those are the types of allies that current president is aligning himself with, and unfortunately, that position is shake your head and deny it, that is true. But, are we, we need to maintain the values that are important to this country.
Okay, over to the caution side.
I'm a little bit nervous about, I have not been there, I'm a child, and you're so sore from sixty counting. I am very concerned about the implications of the Medicaid cuts and the tough budget bill and the closure of our rural hospitals and our rural community health care. There are these six hospitals in this district that are aggressive closing, including Fairchild and Marica. In Siskiyou, as well as throughout the district, these vital, these facilities are vital to our disabled and our working-class people. How could you support a bill that is going to devastate our already fragile infrastructure?
First of all, those I still have, we are trying to support rural, don't care.
Okay, guys, this is the thing, if we're going to spend the next hour just yelling over each other, then there's no point with all these people standing here. So what an answer, if you couldn't stand here and ask the question, let it happen there.
We've been working very hard to help our rural hospitals as far as the development of the reconciliation bill. It has fifty billion dollars directly to aid the, the rural hospitals. Now, the bureaucracy involves sometimes, we're trying to help the Glen Medical Center, for example, who ran into a problem when, at the last end, the last end of the Biden administration, they're trying to... It's a critical access hospital, right, they're, okay, so it's more inclusive, but they're more, they're, it depends how, which map you use, and how many miles apart they are. If it's within thirty-five miles, then they're going to make them not eligible anymore. So we're battling through that decision, and what that, to make it where they wouldn't longer receive more, they've been a critical access hospital for, uh, over two decades, and they can't just have that pulled out from underneath them. And so, for the rest of them that we're talking about, yes, it's difficult in rural America, because of the cost, the cost, the business, it's so high for them, it's lower for a lot of people. So that's what we have to do to the bill, to acknowledge that, and to medicate that, and then help, there is no time to do the people itself. It is trying to, it is attempting to have, be focused on the people that should be eligible. The state of California is causing much problems, they expect us to keep building the well there, when they know it's called bureaucracy, I talked about OSHPAD in, you know, the possible, probably so.
This is just, this is a comment, so please let her make it, lady is yelling, we can stop her, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Chuck Rattles, I'm a former mayor of Orville, and a current council member. And we actually really appreciate you, Congressman, and thank you so much. Happy, glad you're here, sure you've been on, but I'll tell you, this typical crowd of facing ninety-nine percent of their data, not the one percent of the information. The eighty-one percent is correct. My son got up and spoke, my sixteen-year-old son, at your town hall eight years ago. And I knew it was the same people, but it was the same group behavior, and I apologize, Doctor Rattles.
Comment for you, please.
Finally got to you, Al. I'd like to see him, thank you. That time I was here was eight years ago, and, you know, if you met with us more often, we might not have to yell out our hardest words. And I have actually read the nine-hundred-page bill, and that's a recommendation from Fox News, and I encourage you to read it. The most important, well, there's so many important things to say, but to me right now, I don't know how well you know your history, but you have taken money out of poor people's pockets and bought Gestapo's. We have Gestapo, harassing American citizens without due process, you need a stopper!
Okay, and now we have a third and second question, and it'd be nice if you all just let the lady ask it.
Hi Gabby, I'm Nancy Sharpe here, from New York City. I want to know why you support the big orange man and his big ugly bill, and voted for it, and why you, you support the January sixth people being targeted, how did they get that, our capital? And you lied about the fifty billion dollars for cuts, that was a Clinton thing, it was for people to go to work for two years, and then they were going to get kicked off of A after five years, that was that fifty billion dollars in Clinton initiatives.
It is, it is a brand-new element of this bill, appropriation of this bill, Clinton, that's what, how many years ago, twenty-five years ago? But it is a part of that, so what was that part of your question?
January sixth? January sixth?
You said someone insulted my big orange man, that's correct. Well, I was in the room on January sixth. The topic's not over with, it's what really went on that day, so... A lot of people were, put that finger down, that's all they heard.
And over to the comments, here we go.
Thank you Congressman Donalco for being here today, my name is Holly, I am Chico City Council representative. Thank you on behalf of my constituents for being here, I think it's really important that our elected officials are as public-based as possible. I can tell you, if Chico City Council was a public event only once every eight years, I think we would have a room exactly like this. I believe the more civil these discussions will be, the less frequently we show up and have town halls like this, I believe that the harder it will be to facilitate productive conversations.
Thank you!
Hello, first off, anybody that voted for the big bullshit bill...
Watch your language, please, it's a public...
Needs to go. The ICE should just be snapping people on the street that do process the law, needs to go. And why don't, why didn't they think about taking all the, all the people out of the prisons who have had due process, who have been found guilty, and ship them off?
Newsom is going to find out if let people out as it is.
Newsom, this part of the fight to January sixth, insurrectionist!
Okay, we have a question on this side? Hold on, close your eyes, excuse me, sorry.
I'm Brian Gialski, as a disabled veteran with PGSD, of the Bergen Mental Health Support through community care, because there are no openings for a therapist at Chico VA. I was then a neighbor, a therapist, our community, that accepted community care, and who said that, who supported a deal, or, excuse me, was equipped a deal with better following. My community care, dates me to Sam's goal, once a week, for seeing a therapist or something. Since then, since the new administration, every behavioral, whole behavioral health team has quit at the Chico VA. But it's hard to treat. I'm going to be in there for forty seconds, please, thank you. Some people tend to give up, honestly, because they don't understand how to address our challenges. This is regarding my activation with the VA. My question is, how are you going to ensure that there are professionals here equipped to treat us with the impact of the medicalism here already? Are you going to support me when the support isn't out there?
First of all, thank you for serving us and for what you, what you have to do.
You don't care!
With that, and the lady right there holding the mic, we've done plenty of battle trying to have the VA be accountable to people, and answer their questions, and get their appointments, and not cancel their appointments, all these things, the Chico VA... The Chico VA has actually had direct issues recently on how it's operated, not only, there's a lot of great people there, but there's also a couple of not apples. With that kind of leadership, that means things, that means, that means the program isn't their run as well, and so, the House, House... VA, thank you, thank you, VA funding is not being cut, it's continuously being created, and so, all the dollars, people who are going to be helped. And so, if you're talking about the mental health program, you shouldn't have to be going all the way to Sam, we're, we're Delta One, that's crazy. And so, if that ever, you have, that's why, with, and having to load up on the bus at four AM if you're in Marica, what happened, you go down, then find out once in a while, maybe your, your appointment's going to cancel, there's no accountability there. We've done a lot of work trying to make the VA set as much accountable and nice to the veteran. Okay, good, good, well, I can't answer all your questions on this, but please, 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 thank you for your attention. But, my line would be talking about, basically, it comes down to federal dollars being effective, to get in, to work in. Contact us, please, contact us. Sir, contact one of our offices, and we will look more closely at your case, or...
Hey, we have comments on your side, David.
Hi, my name is Jessica Giannola, and I have many concerns, but one of the biggest ones for our area is the cuts to the Medicaid, SNAP, housing vouchers. We have a high rate of poverty in our area, people depend on services to help keep them alive. We have a lack of healthcare, that means illnesses will increase in our area, that impacts everyone. And with the hospitals leaking the shutdowns, potential shutdowns because of lots of revenue, lots of reimbursement that they're, they're gone, and we're all sick. And there's this facade that we're not working hard enough, and that's why we're trying to get free benefits. And everyone's working as hard as they can, even to help their neighbors survive. We have cancer, there's a homeless folks, and then we see the president on the TV saying he's going to send the FBI affidavit to put them where? Because these cuts are only going to increase the homeless population and illness. And, yeah, please support our competition, and I have a second, but there's so much to them, please stand with people, competition has to happen.
And we have another comment on them, over to your, your, please.
Hi, thank you for being here today, my name's Cynthia Perrine, I'm resident of Chico. I appreciate the tradition of the black salute and presentation of colors. In this space, it is respectful to clear land acknowledgement by a tribal representative. With time and the conditions, and given many voices have stewarded for landing your district since time immemorial, my comment is that this land under our feet, originally occupied by the first people of this area, the Machuca, and recognize that it speaks of spiritual... by the first people of this area, the Machuca, and recognize that this spiritual relationship of this land before the fauna and waters that run through it remain, we are humbled to share stewardship of these sacred lands that since time immemorial have sustained the Machuca people and continue to do so today. Thank you.
Okay, a question on our side.
Hello, folks. My name is Mark Bailey. I'm a sponge Democrat. Doug, I'd like to thank you for making the effort to be here today. We appreciate it. Now, I'm gonna let Doug, I'm gonna let you off the hook and ask a question of this awesome crowd. If you think that loud interrupting is productive, no, is counterproductive, can you hold up your green signs?
Okay, sir, I appreciate that, thank you. A civil discussion goes a lot farther towards getting resolved. You know, and this is that thing, so, you know, even previous town halls that they rock, it's free health health program, from what you did, you put in as part of elements of bills that come from. So productive conversation helps us to shape the legislation, and that has come from that home before.
Why don't you listen?
Will we do them like this, or the telephone town halls we have previously? We have many things for those to receive, to information on that. And we tabulate that, we look and see what, you know, what people are thinking on that, and then we, but in this republic that we have.
Hi, Jennifer Teague from Chico. As you know, one of the duties of Congress is to provide governmental oversight to ensure that no one branch of government abuses power. The three branches of government, legislative, executive, and judicial, are at the heart of our democratic system. It was designed to prevent concentration of power in any one branch. I'm concerned that the Republican Congress is no longer doing their job of overseeing the abuse of the executive branch. This president is not working for the American people, but is seeking revenge, power, financial gain for himself. He allowed those to cut the power agencies that have been approved and serving Americans and our friends as a beacon of hope and trust. He has allowed a chainsaw instead of a surgical knife to cut those services. He uses key words like climate change, diversity, equity, inclusion, D E I, social, um, uh, anyway, when he, uh, I'm sorry, because they're cutting me off, but in revenge for the criminal acts of the president, he has fired seasoned nonpartisan government employees for merely having any association to one of those words or with one of his criminal acts like January 6th. I ask you to please take your job seriously and stop this president's acts of destruction and to our democracy and the enrichment of its wealth. One last thing I wanted to say to you, something I admire.
Okay, another question, good question.
My name is Shirley Colby from Chico, and I am a retired Air Force veteran, disabled. My question, or the context is very much like that woman was just talking about, in that if I, as a military person, had done an iota of what Donald Trump has done against the Constitution of the United States, I would then court myself. So my question to you is, what are you doing to maintain that separation of power between this Supreme Court, Congress, and the White House?
That's a good and important question we in the US House and the Senate need to assert our portion of that. And, you know, Bush power is destined to be executive act. We've seen that grow over the years and years with the executive orders, the Biden era set for. Executive orders that everybody certainly had a chance to sign themselves. So it provides oversight, and for example, with the CRAs, as it's called, the Congressional Review Act, that can bring back actions that are done by the executive. For example, they, we have a list of, the list of the long thin smelt, because you have another game. Electric car, electric car handings that support the economy. Standing that start in the US House, whatever the White House, whoever's running it, wants, it still has to start with the US House, there are ten, so obviously the closest people do. The director, the deputy, all the time, so. So that's how we assert that portion of the checks and balances on that. We need to be sure that the Congress, the closest to the people, has that power. We don't want executive branch or judicial branch. Oversight committee hearings and.
We have a comment on the other side.
Thank you so much for being here today. I really appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to be here. My name is Sierra Hashlet, and I am a volunteer here in town. I am the daughter of two vets. I live in military service, and then my mother too, three, and my sister. Um, sometimes my dad is a disabled vet, and he actually has gotten great care from the VA lately. My youngest, or middle son is also a disabled vet, and he has gotten amazing care. And my youngest son, who's twenty, asked me the other day to thank you for everything that you're doing, and I understand that we have to watch out for our disabled vets. I love, my family is all military enforcement, so I understand at first, being watching my family and my dad through what they've been through, but when we have service members that are posting colors, we can clap for a disabled veteran walking back down who's upset, but then boo our service members who are posting colors that fought for the right to boo. So please keep in mind that both sides, you know.
You're going to support one, you have to support the other. So thank you for being here, and we appreciate it, and I can't wait to meet you.
Hi, my name's Alexis Nelson, and although I would argue that what is happening in Gaza is absolutely a genocide, I'm going to keep it local here, thank you. I'm going to keep it local here and say that the defunding happening in the big beautiful bill, PBS and NPR, is going to be detrimental to the people and children in the United States. I learned to read with the help of the Sesame Street, and NPR is one of the few national news organizations that is willing to run work on what's happening in rural communities. And that this defunding is going to be detrimental to people's knowledge of what is happening here, what is happening across the world in rural communities, and PBS is going to harm the constituents' children's ability to learn and grow through supplemental education, because we all know that the part of education is not being funded enough, and that PBS is needed and necessary to help children.
Okay, we have a question over here. A question over on our side over here.
Hello, we have taken approximately $37,000 from the pro-Israel lobby, and have voted to give them weapons every time they pass. The US has given Israel around $22.76 billion in military aid up to this point, since October 2023. How can we justify this spending able to commit a genocide and starve children? There are 18,500 in Worms death kids averaging $20 a day. If all it takes is $37,000 to get you to support an unable genocide, why should we trust that you have our best interests at heart? We should resign in shame, and we'll be remembered for supporting a modern day Holocaust in the climate we're suffering in.
What do you think about the innocent Israelis that were attacked? October 7th, Meridi, Meridi Joy, and September 1st. Brought by Hamas, who builds their, you know. All right, we got the next comment over there. No, I still have ninety seconds, right? So, um, on your question, on your last question, Israel would like to peacefully compose its own. And so, the biggest question that I think last time, it's that Abraham forage, bringing something to that adversary together, that it's, that's a very positive take. So I guess it comes down to do you believe Israel has a right to exist or not? Hamas doesn't believe it, or Biden doesn't believe it, so maybe many terrorists have been, and don't believe so. So that's why I support the beacon, the beacon. But if the press laid that right at the feet of Hamas, if Hamas was not launching missiles, launching missiles from schools, from above schools and mosques, churches, the whole thing, if it's true that they're launching missiles at innocent Israelis, it wouldn't be happening if you guys didn't see the evidence, and.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Gina Max, and I have a family of teenagers who came to this country almost thirty years ago after waiting my turn for three years in my own country. I have five of eighteen children, and I have taught them how to love and respect America, the country that gave us the opportunity to live our own American dream. Like many Hispanics, I believe in strong family values, freedom of speech, and the right of our children to a quality education. That means focusing on academics, reading, writing, math, history, not teaching sex in school. Both of these missions belong at home with parents. So I want to thank you for continuing to defend parental rights, given when you are mocked and yelled at by the very people touting freedom of speech. And love through the yelling, I suggest you be a pacifist and travel. You will see the grass is not greener on the other side. America is still the greatest country in the world.
Oh, stop such a vision.
Hello, my name is Ben Rock, I'm a retired science educator, and I want a congressional agenda that respects the Constitution. Who stands up to due process for everyone, who does not enable the destruction of the Department of Education, the National Institutes of Health, the Centers for Disease Control, the National Institute of African Atmospheric Association, data from the National Weather Service. These things are critical to our existence. Data, science is knowledge, and we need to respect that, not cover it up, not change the truth. Thomas Jefferson said that a well-educated population is necessary for a democracy, and we are experiencing the destruction of the Department of Education, bribes, extortions on universities, on law firms, on media, and practicing free speech, and that's got to stop.
Okay, next question over here, Marco.
Hi, I'm Molly Tompkins of Forest Ranch. I'm an IHSS provider. I care full-time for my severely disabled adult daughter, who I adopted from foster care for the rest of my life. I've also taken in my severely disabled nephew, who he had nowhere to go. How will you specifically ensure that IHSS and regional centers are fully funded with the budget cuts to Medicaid so that my family and others like us can survive? It's a matter of life and death for my family.
Well, there's not cuts for Medicaid, so.
Did you even read the bill, Doug?
Federal tax dollars that you pay will fund that program, all right? Look, the cuts you're talking about are not happening because of this bill. Now, you need to also look at the responsibility of the state of California to be able to put jobs as well. Do I say that? We will continue our legislative process and through appropriations process to make sure that we're funding projects. Not on that. We did not vote to cut that. We did not vote to cut that. They don't need funding, they don't need funding. Well, Nancy, you did good work there. Thank you for helping us, Doug.
I want to associate myself with an earlier comment regarding separation of powers and the remuneration of government during their term, and I appreciate that you said that Congress should legislate and stand up against the executive branch. I'm concerned specifically about the whole tariff policy. Article one, section eight of the Constitution talks about the power of Congress to regulate foreign trade. It doesn't say anything about the president unilaterally creating tariffs, moving nearly one percent later on, you know, right? Abuse of power, I think, is really dangerous for our businesses, it's also very bad for our relations with allies, I mean, for instance, Canada, the most privileged country in the world, and treating them very poorly, and we should do that. Thank you.
I want to talk to you about a local problem, the fire victim trust. You mentioned the campfire in Paradise in 2018. There are a lot of people that are really suffering because of what's happened with PG&E, the fire victim trust, Jerry Montalongo, and the United States Bankruptcy Court, his actions. And, you know, it's interesting, in 2020 PG&E filed bankruptcy, in 2023 and 2024 they had wrecked profits, to the point of 2024 the profit was $2.87 billion.
California allowed it.
You know, I think some political pressure from your position needs to be applied to protect the people that are living in your backyard where this happened. And when the fire was started, it was written in the text PG&E, in bankruptcy, it was written by people who wear three-piece suits. Doug LaMalfa, the farmer, did not understand that information, just like a common man like myself, were overwhelmed with what's happening and how it be neglected and ignored. We tried this offshoot approach, and I think some people are tired of that. I am personally really tired of it. You know, I lost everything. A lot, nineteen, nineteen thousand people lost everything. And all we want now is we were given a contract, a determination notice by the fire victim trust of what they were going to give us. There was no disclaimer that said you may not receive all of this. People signed that, I'm sorry, people signed that as a contract that they thought they could take to the bank, just like you take the rice check to the bank.
Can we have a question over here?
And this one says, fifty-four months after we signed our determination notices, fifty-four months was when we were told, you're not going to get a hundred percent, you should have never expected a hundred percent. There was no warning notice on the determination notice that came from the US Bankruptcy Court saying we were not going to get a hundred percent of what they were telling us. So now we're faced with a thirty percent deficit, and that's what needs to happen, so the courts are put to. PG&E could afford to pay us all, if not, we should be protected under the Sixth Amendment of the US Constitution, people are protected. Because people are not being treated the same, the Gibson Park people are not being treated the same, and that's not a natural problem, it's the market, that's a powerful problem because the legislation was passed, but it means the work of all, these are people in your backyard.
Okay, we have a question on the side.
Hi Doug, my name is Cecilia. I'm a constituent from Chico. I call your office every day since a big, beautiful bill. Haven't gotten a response, of course. You've answered around this question a few times today, so I'm going to be a little bit more specific. How do you justify voting yes on the big ugly bill, knowing that 43% of your constituents, the highest of any California congressional district, receive Medicaid and other government assistance? I would also like to know how you plan to make up for the hospital's deficit because of the lack of payment, so the burden doesn't land on the average taxpayer. Please only discuss your views on the Medicaid part of this bill, no other parts because of limited time.
Okay, so this bill is not going to be the be-all and-all on the whole Medicaid question. This had a portion that had to do with the fiscal under the budget reconciliation rules, and so it's not the end of the discussion, so it's not the end of the legislation we'll be doing upon it. On this particular aspect, it was focused on trying to find the savings under the portion of Medicaid that should not be due to illegal immigrants. The able-bodied, which is in really, really good complete balance, the people who are getting it, the people who are getting it, when we're dealing with a bigger level, including who needed it in our eligible program, they're not being cut. And the hospital, we didn't even talk about, the back in Sacramento, where they're taking $12 billion. California spends, California adjudicates the money that comes from the federal government and it's sucked kind of out of our hands once that money's there. Sacramento, they're performing well because it's a two-step process. We want the dollars for the people who need it, the people who are still eligible for it, and not all the ways it's been going on. So, if we were much more successful, if that $12.5 billion was in the pool for the people who are supposed to be eligible for it, they'd be a lot better off. At some point, it can't be just an endless stream of dollars from the federal government.
Okay, comments on the other side?
Thank you, Doug. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I also want to thank the gentleman earlier who said that we need to be civil and unheard so we can keep having these things. One thing I'd like to say is that for any of you, harness this energy together, both sides of the aisle, please, to work on getting more mental health treatment facilities and drug treatment facilities. There has been dollars applied in ways, and for both parties, that people don't appreciate or like, but what we can do is try to put down the hostility and harness this incredible energy you have. I don't necessarily agree with all of you here today, and maybe not many at all, but I will say this, I'm willing to work with whoever is willing to work to do the right thing and to communicate with that office. My family recently needed help with a social security situation. Doug and his office stepped right up immediately to help. There are, tonight, I have a family member who is a veteran who got very tough assistance. Chico is fabulous. There was someone at the U County desk office who's fabulous. Thank you for taking care of our veterans. When we can't come together and honor veterans walking down the aisle and we bring that, where are we as affected people? All right, that's it.
Yes, awesome. Mr. LaMalta, my question's a local question. Lake of Drone Water District in Berry Creek needs your assistance. The Army Corps of Engineers and the Regional Water Quality Control Board have railroaded the district and stocked the current sediment removal project to restore the lake's storage capacity. The sediment is a direct effect of the 2020 North Complex fire and erosion from the February 22-23 winter storms. Both federal disasters, like the Lake of Drone Water District, received all the necessary permits required by California Fish and Wildlife, EPA, and FEMA. Now, only halfway through the project, the Army Corps of Engineers and the Regional Water Control Board have shut down the project, claiming the district is in violation of threatening U.S. waters with non-existent coal material and threatening to pull the FEMA funding. Will you please get to the bottom of this gross overstepping of federal water power, federal power, and the City Lake of Drone Water District, which resuming a removal of 100,000 cubic yards of sediment to the lake, so that we can have the storage capacity of 200 acre feet for much-needed fire protection?
Thank you. Lake of Drone, we focused a good deal of effort on that, trying to help people get through the permit process, have the federal agencies involved pay attention. And that's the thing, they slow up the permit process, they have to get on conference calls with me on there saying, what are you going to do to help move this process along? Army Corps is a very frustrating organization because, and as you say, you're halfway through the process, you have been permitted, and some artificial timeline comes in to say, oh, you have to stop because it might affect the waters of the United States. Well, that waters rule was the WOTUS waters of the United States. That's a prime example of this executive power that was way beyond control, that makes the federal government and the Army Corps and EPA and others, they want to be charged very much for every small stream that might run water for an hour after the rain. In this case, you get caught up in that as well because that lake really belongs to the people up there. It shouldn't be deemed as a water in the United States that they're concerned about. Now, bad things are going on, chemicals certainly. You're simply trying to restore the lake to what had happened before the fire, and we will be glad to help you on that and move along, the Army Corps. At the state level, with the Water Control Board underlying control, there's going to be help from your state legislators to prod those guys and make sure they behave a little better on helping you instead of harming you for the work they use to be there. And very pretty, very well hearted. And so, and we are, there is devotion on that as well. So, we won't forget, we'll be on it. We want to help. Thank you.
So, I wanted to tell you Congressman Doug LaMalta, as a former Army employee, you have to have a social security number to get Medicare, SNAP benefits, or power benefits. So, you and your kids saying illegal immigrants are gaining benefits is not true. And I have to say, I was very angry last year during the Los Angeles fires, when you were at Mar-a-Lago kissing the ring, President Trump posted a photo on Truth Special, and second writer, while Los Angeles burned. How dare you!
Do you know how freely available social security numbers are?
My name is Frank Shams, I'm a resident here in Chico. I'm going to read to you a note that was sent to me by Rob Banta. This week, my office released a new report that lays out the scope and impact of our fight to protect California from the Trump administration's unlawful attacks. For the first time, we have tallied exactly what we have saved for our state. More than $168 billion in vital federal funding that was cut and held hostage to California because Trump doesn't like Gavin Newsom. And apparently, you don't like Gavin Newsom, and I'm tired of you making the negative comments about him. He is a good leader, he has balls, and just like you.
Okay, we have a question on the other side?
Chuck Maher from Chico, Californian. My daughter asked a question a moment ago, and I had one formulated that I hardly know the answer to. So, I'm going to say, a July economist slash Yuko poll found that 79% of Trump voters believed the government should release the Epstein files, and that 52% of those polled thought the government was covering up evidence. What is your position on the Epstein files? And furthermore, both of my parents served in Vietnam. They both sought care at the VA on the East Coast for years. Everything worked flawlessly, no reason to cut it, accountability seems to be just fine. And my wife is a teacher for 28 years, and we're tired of the bill application of public education system, and she thinks we're doing their job to raise decent citizens in this country. My wife is not having driving needs in her classroom, they are not indoctrinated, they are teaching, and they don't make enough money, and they're doing their job, get off the back.
My wife taught publicly for several years as well, and all she wanted to teach not have crazy mandates coming down the main road, that should be the three hours a day. The stuff that's being brought in as offensive to families, and the suffrage meeting, and libraries, and, you know, pretty much. It's interesting, the Epstein situation was not an issue during the Biden administration. It seems to have very clear transparency of what was going on with that Epstein situation. The minds who victimized, John and I under any bathroom, victimized, you know, whether it's in bathrooms or whatever, we need to have protection for that, for this. I'm hoping by the end of this, I'm sure as soon as we get back September, the information will be available to us, because there's actually two chunks of information that are being held by judges on the being released, your grand jury reports, that grand jury reports traditionally not have the sanctity of being made to be sealed. Now, we need to get this information out and get to the truth of what's going on. So, we're very interested in that file, which is a bad look to have information being suppressed. But there's also people involved in the way those files, at some level, need to be redacted so it's... Clear, fine, it's not finished. Okay, so, in those files, also innocent names are included, so you need to be careful with how the names and some of the information that will lead back to victims are put out there. So, a little bit of each, you know, the wheels of the legislation and justice don't always do as fast as you like, but hopefully, in September, we can get back, we'll handle this, so this information gets out. Properly handle, protect the innocent victims.
My name is Sarah Teague, and earlier I wasn't able to finish what I was saying. I was a teacher for 30 years, my husband 20, he also worked in road construction and farm labor camps as a youngster, and he paid into security for a long time. So, thank you for voting yes on HRAB2, the Social Security Fairness Act. I know you opposed it in 2016 when my husband first retired, and I thank you for discovering that GPO and WEP unfairly penalize many American workers and their spouses. We lost, were penalized in our beginning retirement years, over $100,000 because of that that we'll never see. So, I thank you for listening and actually changing your mind from what you had in 2016.
Hi, my name is Sarah Brinck, I'm Chico resident. I just have one comment to say, and thank you for being here, by the way, thank you for this, but I just want to say, please stop blaming Biden and Biden for doing this. It was not perfect, there were definitely issues, there were definitely problems on both sides, but please stop blaming Biden!
Do you have a question on here?
Good morning. My parents were Holocaust survivors. I have known what an authoritarian fascist government looks like since I was seven years old. Manzanar, the Japanese-American relocation camp in Sosa, is just a short drive from here. Earl Warren was governor of California and approved the relocation of Japanese-Americans to those camps. He spent the rest of his life trying to atone for what he did in those years in the 1940s. People being kidnapped without restaurants, without try, without recourse by the President of the United States, ICE armies, is clear evidence of how a fascist authority during government works. We are not headed towards authoritarian fascist government. We are ready there. 20 years from now, when history will be rewritten yet again, the real question is, will wing LaMalta be matched in the same sentence of voters, Megalek, and Trump?
I predict no.
Hello, my name is Michelle. I'm a resident of Chico. The first thing that I would address is you keep on bringing up that the Biden administration could have released the Epstein files. Ghislaine Maxwell was appealing her case, and the judge sealed those files, so that did not happen. The other thing is that these victims of Epstein and Ghislaine Maxwell have been struggling to get justice and keeps on being pulled out from under them by Alex Acosta, by the Trump administration, continuing to not give these people justice. Now, they moved Ghislaine Maxwell to a sweetheart campus in Texas to try to get her to say nice things about the president, and that is incorrect. She needs to still get her time and be held accountable. You all left, the Speaker of the House released you guys so that you didn't have to deal with releasing the files, and that's not right either. And also, quit scooping up people off the street and out of the yard. And then people who are trying to meet their requirements to become citizens, and it's not right. Those are not criminals, they're not gain members, they're just working members of our society.
Hi, Mr. LaMalta, I have a very simple question for you. Do you believe that elected officials who knowingly protect and enable criminal behavior, including insurrection, fraud, and sexual abuse, should be removed from office? I'm talking to you, look, if yes, why have you not publicly condemned members of your own party accused of these actions?
Everybody should be held accountable, whether elected or not, if you've done illegal activity, and, you know, the lady was talking about due process, right? Due process for Ghislaine Maxwell, due process for the female Jim Lee Six, due process for the... If there's an elected official, if they're found guilty, that, ooh, down the road. That wasn't a good answer? So, after due process, you should not be, and if you're found guilty, removed from office? Due process, are people for due process? Okay, everybody who thinks something is allowed to have a due process, found guilty, removed from office.
Congressman LaMalta, thank you so much for being here. My name is Sue Hildebrand.
I want to, I'm just acknowledge that Governor Newsom recently announced that they are moving forward on the redistricting effort here in California. And, and they have very clearly stated that they are going to target our district. And it makes sense that you will oppose the redistricting here in California. Um, in the, um, uh, initiative, the ballot initiative that we will vote on in November, it clearly states that if Texas goes ahead with redistricting, then California will. And so, my comment is, I really hope that you oppose all mid, mid-decade redistricting, and not just ours here in California, because your seat is on the line, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lindelance. I think you know my husband now. Nancy Lindelance. My husband is now, he was a Democrat, funny that you would think that he's a Republican. Uh, he's a asshole a long time ago. Here's my problem, I'm a former Republican, my party left me. Here's my problem, you're asking us to not believe what we're seeing with our own eyes. You are asking us to agree to let January sixth just be a walk in the park, as an insurrection. You did not vote to decorate or recognize those fabulous men that were trying to protect you. Everything that you have approached now is what I make my decisions on, in my belief system. Not, not CNN, not NBC, but we cannot believe what comes out of your mouth.
First of all, thank you for being with your constituents, I appreciate that. My name is Rob Davidson, I'm a volunteer at Casey-Abarth Community Radio. I'm going to follow up on the comment about public media. You voted to, uh, re, rescind funding for the preparation for public broadcasting, funding that had been approved for two years. I know that your focus was to go after PBS and NPR, they just were perceived slammed. If you check the media bias chart, actually NPR is more centrist and balanced. But, what also happened when you voted to kill the CPB was you, uh, affected community radio and nonprofit public media radio stations and TV stations throughout the north state, including communities like Pupa and Redway Reservation and Rancho Realms, where in some cases, the funding will kill those stations. There will be no more public media, no more community radio, no more community TV, no more access to information. My question to you is, number one, why did you vote to kill the CPB? And number two, what are you going to do to help, uh, assist the dissemination of information, for example, during the campfire that they took fire in, Tom took fire? Stations like Casey-Abarth were broadcasting evacuation information, doesn't work out. Some of those stations are going to, are, have been obliterated. What are you going to do about that? Well, the people have many, many choices to receive media. Look at, look at the massive, the amount that you can find via streaming, via many, many venues, so, and yes, there was, uh, there was all in common, see, than one bill. Now, I, I could be sympathetic towards cardouts for those, you know, very rural stations like that, that aren't tied back to the level, because they are biased, they're very biased. They're not, they're not, they're not, they're not balanced at all at the high level. At the low level, I, I appreciate the work. The bill was either all or nothing there, you had to vote for the whole bill. So, I would be certainly sympathetic towards fighting cardouts for the local citizenry you talk about up there, and, and work on that, okay? Contact us. Is that forward? The comment line seems to be running short here.
Oh, really?
I know you'll have plenty of them.
Um, okay, see, now I want to rebel to my comments here, but I was thinking about what the hell happened on January sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and, I remember, I was just going to like a Hill climbing day that day, and like the talk and discussion was like, oh, wait, you know, there's historical events going on today, a large mob of people outside the Capitol, mostly peaceful, but the ones that are most concerned, the ones who are actively storming the building, finally pushing through the Capitol Police, and were one security line away from entering their Capitol chambers, and putting yourself in danger. And, everything else aside, all I, you know, concerns or frustrations, I imagine that must have been terrifying, and also, I want a sense of question I have for, well, not question, comment, but if I were your shoes and thinking, my boss had just sent this anger out, it could have killed me, I'd be asking myself, why am I supposed to be supporting this man? I, 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 if you're unique, and you need help getting away from, this is a serious question, it's like, if you need help, like, pulling away from everything that's going on, please.
We can help.
Therapy.
You need help.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ellis, and my question is, there, there's supposed to be about three hundred thousand, uh, children missing in the United States that have been sex trafficked across the border. President Trump says that they found about ten thousand of them. Is there any more information on that?
Can I raise the question, comment line rule? Okay, is there more information? It's an ong- it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing effort, and indeed, every time you find even one that's been on that list, it's, it's a win, so, finding tens of thousands of them, uh, it's horrendous how it's allowed to happen because of our porous borders, and so, who the kids are, and if there are people who need to be, as pawns in that border scheme to bring people across, and have them defamily, defamily, for example, so. Congressman, uh, my name is Virgil Rafferty. Uh, my question probably should be, why are you part of this movement for fascism? It's not quite there, I haven't finished my question. My question actually is, if you're not here to either announce your resignation, why aren't you here to apologize to the farmers of the north state, in pursuit of their support for your Trump tariffs? Why aren't you here to apologize to our state counties? All right, fine, you mean it, thanks. You talked about something around it? So, well, our almond growers or walnut growers have a very difficult time, and that walnut guy stood a couple, three years ago with a very tough crop towards the end of the summer there. We work hard to help, uh, have that crop be taken, taken through the process, get off the market here, but we need to do much on tariffs, but India, India has been therapy against our, our nut grower. You talked about tariffs, you talked about tariffs. India has been, certainly, therapy against our agriculture for a long time, okay? And so, it hasn't worked in negotiations so far, so I guess if you hit the reset button on that, we're saying, all right, we will duplicate yours until you want to come to the table. We've seen that happen on several other countries, that the tariffs have actually come back down because it finally come to the table, because the president has been bold enough to do something about it. And you're a little loose with the word fascism, when there's plenty going on on the other side.
Hey, so we, uh, we're, uh, almost, uh, nearing the station here, where we all get to get off the train. Comment? Uh, hello? Uh, my name is Diana Robinson, I'm a constituent, and, um, I wondered about President Trump's really apparent, um, mental decline. I just can't even stay on the subject when he's speaking. He goes from being asked a question about tariffs, to talking about they're eating cats and dogs. Um, he is very, very obviously in, um, this mental decline. And, I'm wondering how long the, uh, maga of Congress is going to continue to support everything this madman comes up with, because he is just like, filler in his thumbs now, and, and, and support every single thing that comes out of his mouth.
A nice, a nice lady asked me not to talk about Biden, and Biden's son.
Anybody else have another comment on that side?
Yeah, uh, my name is Nancy LeKue, and, um, I'm really appalled that a privileged white male by herself voted for the SOT Act, when there's no evidence of illegal voting, that will essentially disenfranchise millions of women who now have to prove that their drivers' guns, and actually, their first significant name, a man took their husband's name, married name, and that is just, in my opinion, the smallest man in the world.
Uh, this is Dr. Kathleen Kaiser, I've been teaching at different levels, mostly university levels, since nineteen seventy-two, uh, in this area. Today is the first day back for educators in the local area. And, the cuts the federal government has made, we don't know if we have enough money to feed the kids in school, there don't have enough money for their medical faculty that , uh, work with kids when they come into the playground, sick or injured. And the context of this is, public education is critical to our country. So, what are you going to do to reinforce public education right here, which starts in one week?
Public education needs to be focused on what the children really need, and that's focusing on how to be competitive in a, in a, in a difficult world job market. You see many coming over from other countries to take some of our high-level positions, but we need to focus on the so-called three Rs, we need to write and register, and be proficient at that, the proficiency levels, especially in the inner-city schools, that's the uniform simplicity, what do you think? Why, why are the proficiency levels so low down there? They're not focusing on what would be helpful directly for the kids. And so, we have all these other ancillary things going on, that are, like, we'll get started on, and then start another thing. But you think, besides, you know, when we're talking constantly about climate change, constantly about, the state, the state can afford half of this three-hundred-seven billion dollar budget on education too. You believe Sacramento is fair on how the dollars are affecting, how they're getting there? Take away the mandates, your hamstring, well, likewise, helping the teacher implement the handicaps, he even told that a bunch of years ago, to make her job more difficult for the, uh, future representative, said, hey, what's about agreements to make everything go slow down? So, you know, it's just not, it's not beautiful, it's children means itself, it said more what, uh, Indians themselves. All right, we're, we're hitting the timeline here, so we need a couple more comments, okay?
Hello?
Fair warning, we're hitting the timeline, okay?
Um, I do have, I want to touch on, it's only one minute. Um, the, the overriding, uh, theme of what you had to say, to my understanding today, has been, um, a lack of accountability, and instead, uh, uh, the continual comments of, let's take the Gaza genocide, for example, it's okay to kill the kids because somebody else who's not a child went into Israel and broke up a music festival, and did a horrific, a horrific act. Um, and, and, and that is okay, um, going after Hamas, it's okay to, to have all of this, um, ancillary collateral damage, so.
Well, please, yes, I'm going to go ahead and comment, okay? When Hamas initiated that against innocent people, how about these people? Hamas initiated against innocent people. When Hamas built their parachutes, when they built their missile watching facilities underneath the hospitals, the schools, the people, our citizens, nobody wants this to happen, nobody wants this to happen, they're just, they're ready to come in, they seize it as it comes in, and market it and do something else with it. This lies heavily of Hamas and their terrorist activity here. Israel fans over backwards and try and help end it.
Do you want to attempt to do one final question? Oh, you shared my name? Sorry. Um, I also have a rhetorical question, and it said very clearly, that a due process resulted in conviction that somebody should be held accountable. Due process convicted our current president of forty-four counties. And, due process also convicted that woman in the Epstein thing of a lot of horrific things. And yet, under your watch, both of those people are, are being treated differently than what you said you believed in.
How can we, I don't know.
Okay, so one, one last question? Oh, you have one last?
One of the changes in my life is falling. I have two, or three grandsons, two great-grandsons, and I am so worried about their future. Also, climate change denial about what, uh, Trump is doing, rolling back green energy is allowing China to outpace us, it's going to hurt our economy, what's going on is nonsense. Thank you. Okay, you have any final question?
I thank you for letting me talk. My name is Neil Green. I am very concerned that the GOP is currently manipulating the list of the voting people of the United States. Uh, we had a comment over here regarding the, uh, registration process being unfair, becoming unfair at the moment, and I'm totally against that. I think Congress should have a big, strong voice on that. My question really right now is related to what's going on in Texas. The redistricting, um, are you in support of that? And if you are not, if you aren't in support of that, will you support redistricting in California?
Well, for, your opening comment there on the, the women's right to vote, register on that, nobody wants that to be, uh, deterred in any capacity. Indeed, indeed, go back to the history of the Nineteenth Amendment, look at the voter rules on that, it was overwhelmingly in Republicans support, the past few nineteen amendments in Congress, and, 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 no talk about that. That said, mid-decade, uh, re, uh, reapportionment is bad for, and we've seen, for example, in North Carolina, a couple occasions there, my colleagues don't know what district that it is from the election, election, because they go into court and want to redo the lines based on racial issues, okay?